Hey, everybody. I'd like to invite the Elton football team up here. Come on up, Coach Feeney. Come on, Zellman. I'd like to invite the whole group up here and representing the team.
Thank you.
Elton High, class of sixty-three.
Okay, the group is... The group is gonna lead us to the pledge of the flag tonight. All right, ready? Pledge of the flag. United States of America, in the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and just for all. Okay, I asked Coach and a few of the players to come tonight and pump us up a little bit for we've got a huge football game on Friday. We're playing, I'll let the coach tell you, we're playing Liberty. Go ahead, Coach.
Yeah, we have a state quarterfinal game this Friday night, seven o'clock. We are very excited to be where we're at right now. The guys have worked extremely hard to get us in this position. You know, we try to pride ourselves on being representatives of the town by, you know, reflecting what Elton, you know, what Elton values. Hard work, community, and respect for our town and for each other. And that, these guys, you know, bigger than football sometimes, that's what the beauty is when I step back to Coach and look at this collection of guys, they do that. They represent the town as well as you can ask teenage boys to do. And, you know, we're extremely proud of them. And I know that they're gonna put their best foot forward on Friday night to get us one step closer to, you know, that game down the road, which we're not talking about.
I understand.
That's where we're at right now. So, you know, as far as getting people out to the game, I mean, it's a big game. The team that's coming to town, Liberty High School, out of Carroll County, they, they're good. They're a very good football team. And we had a great week of practice this week so far, getting prepared for them. But it's gonna take, you know, that twelfth man never hurts. So if we could get, you know, the town out, support us, it would mean a lot to these young men. They feel that energy. I see it in them, I can feel it, you know, when they're out on the field. When that crowd gets loud, they just seem to rise up, and it would be great for the sport this week.
Well, Coach, I can tell you that we're very proud of the efforts. It means a lot, because you guys are out there not only representing yourselves, your high school, which you are representing, the town of Elton. And we really, really appreciate everything that you're doing. And just let us know what we can do for you. We're here for you guys. If there's ever been any issues or any problems, please make us aware of them. We're there to help you.
This is the future here, and we're good hands.
Perfect. Perfect so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It'll go milks.
We are.
Let's get ready to say it. All right, let's get ready to say it. Okay, welcome everyone to the November twentieth meeting. Minutes of the November sixth meeting. We have a motion to approve. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills? We have a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. I'd like to invite Mr. Dwight Tomey, representing Mr. and Mrs. Jason Preston, to come on down if you'd like, and tell us about this petition for annexation.
This is a file of property. I tell you, there's a sad tale of low. You may recall when the development that was built up next to them, the townhouse development, I can't remember the name of it. Started out called Baker's Hill, but I have no idea what its name is now.
Hickory-Noll.
Hickory-Noll, thank you. Was developed, the developer actually reached out to the five or six homes there along Route Seven and said, "Do you wanna annex in while they're annexing in and connect the town water and sewer system? It might be a wise thing to do." And none of them would do it at the time. Subsequent to that, these nice people bought the house that's sort of closest to the entrance.
Is it on this side of the entrance, ten and up the hill?
Yes.
And this is going up Old Bone and Work Lake?
And their existing system is failing. So they're...
Oh, perfect.
They're to the point where they're pumping out every week. And certainly it's better for the neighborhood, for them, for everybody if they connect to the town sewer system. So they are requesting to be annexed. They're already connected to the town's water system, if you can tell me enough. I guess through an accident history, somehow those houses got connected to the water system but not the sewer system. So they are requesting to be annexed into town so they can connect to your town sewer system, and will be happy to be part of the town of Elton. They don't live there. They have a tenant there, a nice tenant there, but that's the whole, long and short of it. They only need to connect to your system.
I think from my perspective, I'd love to have every one of those houses so that there was a defined town of Elton area, instead of having some areas that are in the county and some areas that aren't.
And I think you eventually will have that, because the other houses are gonna have the same problem they had eventually, it's just a matter of time.
Does anyone from the board have any questions, comments? Hearing none? Thank you. Jason, you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Louis, we have an annexation resolution A two dash two thousand nineteen regarding the above petition for annexation.
I believe the board should initially move to accept the petition.
Do we have a motion to accept the annexation resolution A two two thousand nineteen for introduction?
So moved for introduction purposes, is that what?
Yeah, to accept the petition that they can be annexed, then we'll subsequently approve the resolution.
Okay. Can we accept the petition? We have a second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Now, I think Michelle, when, there'll be a hearing probably in January, if you said in order...
There'll be a hearing in January fifteenth.
Okay. Because we have to advertise this sort of match.
We're gonna advertise on December eleventh and December eighteenth.
And you'll let us know, you give me comments, so we'll go ahead and go over shit for that. So January fifteenth?
January fifteenth.
At seven oh five PM.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Are we okay to go?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, it is seven ten, and we're gonna have, we're five minutes behind schedule on our public hearing.
You need to accept the annexation resolution A two dash two thousand nineteen for introduction.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve resolution A two dash two thousand nineteen for introduction?
So moved.
Got a motion? In a second. Any discussion on the annexation in the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Gene, it is seven ten. We're gonna open up the public hearing, and you're gonna give us a progress report on three projects.
Yes.
And they're behind you.
Well, let's start with the ADA project. The transfer ADA project, which is this one. That's the rendering. We applied for a grant, we applied for a grant through strategic demolition, and we weren't, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We were not funded through strategic demolition, but they sort of handed it off to Community Development Block Grant to fund the project, because it included ADA accessibility, which is something that is funded through Community Development Block Grant. So they provided us with a grant of a hundred and thirty-five thousand to cover the Davis Bacon wage rate requirements for the project. So with this project, we had to bid this project out twice. The first time it went out to bid, we received one bid for the project from Priority Construction, and the state told us we had to re-bid the project. So we bid it out again, received two bids, one from Priority, one from Meadows. Priority was the lowest competent bidder, but their bid still exceeded the price of the, for the, we had for construction. We had already bid out the architectural engineering work, and Duffield did that work for us. So Priority Construction awarded the contract for a hundred thousand, six hundred eighty dollars to create handicap accessibility from Main Street to the Town Square, from the Town Square to the Alliance Building. They also rebuilt sections of the wall here. The wall was starting to fail from atmospheric pressure. They corrected the drainage for that and fixed the wall. And they also repaired the stoop. We don't have a photo of that, but the stoop going into the first entrance into the old town hall there. If you recall, it's covered with black plywood. That brick was failing, and they repaired that. They installed handrails, these handrails here onto the street, from the steps, and moved the arch, and will be installing a sign for the Alliance. The street sign that was here is gonna be moved across the street to, as you're coming down North Street, you'll face it on Main Street, the directional street sign. It'll be moved over there for more logical location. It was too far off the street, you couldn't see it. They're just about finished. Dan Hanley and Duffield have been doing the punch list items. I think the only thing left to do is to paint the railings black and install another railing off to the side. They were good. They're supposed to paint the railings tomorrow, and they assure me they'll be dry so that nobody will get paint on them on Friday.
I'm not touching it.
Maybe it'll be painted on there against Friday, when we have the Christmas tree. The Christmas tree will be installed in the center of the circle.
That will happen.
There's, there's gotta be, yeah.
The tree's up.
Is it up?
No, no, no. The paint will redraw.
I'll blow it myself.
Okay.
Guarantee it yourself.
So we have...
Again, but I'm not touching it, so.
So we have a couple of benches that we're gonna install, and then I think the thought was maybe we'd wait till spring to add additional landscaping. The only thing we're waiting on is there are path lights, there's twelve path lights that'll be installed around the circle and around the walkways, that are about three feet high to light the walkways. And we will not receive delivery of those until early January. It took a long time for the manufacturer to make them in sense to us.
And who puts those in?
We'll either have a contractor do it, or we'll end the contract with the contractor and have them actually do it. It's just installing them. The electrical conduits are already there, and the bases for them are, they're ready to go. They just have to make the connections to only get the lights in. So, but I think the brick looks great. Contractor also provided us with a cost estimate to complete, to finish this area here. This is the original brick sidewalk. It's a little rough. They provided us with a cost estimate if we wanted to finish that work.
Do we have the money for that?
Well, I haven't responded to the, I just got it today, so I have to look at it, confirm with...
I didn't know if we were, if we were under budget.
No, we're not under budget. We are just at the budget. As a matter of fact, right now, we are right at the budget. Actually, we exceeded a little bit because of the lights. But we had, we had to pull the lights and the benches and the landscaping out of the original, out of the original contract with Priority, because they're bidding a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and we only had a hundred thousand in the, left in the grant. And so we pulled out those items, and we had a couple of benches to put in, and we were gonna install the lights or purchase the lights and install them ourselves, or have them installed. So that is sort of something we had to pull out to get the price down. We still, we still have about, you know, a little bit more work left to do out there with the other railing around the stoop, but it's, the project looks good, I think. I think the brickwork came out real nice. So it should look nice for Friday.
Good.
It was a little nervous about the finishing.
Well, we've been through several...
But we've had a lot of...
Several events.
Right.
You know, we got to deal with this. Barbara, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
While we're on the street, you're saying some additional work that needs to be done on the, on the street, right, for the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, yeah.
Kind of this way, on the opposite, over across the street, kind of like spork or whatever. There's areas I noticed walking during all these nighttime activities, there's all kinds of traps over there to trip over.
Dan, can you take a look at all the trap areas?
I don't know what else to call them, other than they're like areas where I guess you have the storm pipe or something there, where it's, you just trip right over.
That's a really good one, Dan, because I'm out there all the time.
It's where the water line, where the shut-off is for the water or the sewer?
Would you drive by?
And they're, and they're kind of sunk down a little bit. It is a little bit of a trap.
I've seen people trip.
Well, there you go. It's a liability. So, I mean, I'd like to take a good look at wherever they might be, but I know there's several over there. You know, even if we could just fill it with something that's, you know, safer, rubber or something, it would be interesting to get your...
Well, that's a good one.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this project is almost finished, and I think it came up pretty well, and pretty close to budget, so.
It does look good.
Yeah. It made it over the threshold.
All right.
So the other project is Neighborhood Community Center, and this is a recent photo taken by the town administrator. So it's our Neighborhood Community Center at one twenty-one Stockton Street. Oh, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any comments? This is actually a public, a public comment, on the Town Square ADA.
It's nice.
It's very attractive.
Great. And that, so the next one is Neighborhood Community Center. Nineteen thousand square foot building. We received eight hundred thousand dollars of Community Development Block Grant funds. So it's constructed on two point three eight acres of property off of Stockton Street, and so it'll include gymnasium, space, offices, kitchen, and, let's see, playground will probably be also developed on the site, a small playground. So it's, will be operated by the Parks and Recreation Department for the residents of the area. Whipper Sham does a successful bidder on the project, design build. So we were, have been working with Whipper Sham since December of last year on designing the building, and to this point where with the design and construction, where they've got the foundation, the braiding, and the steel up. The invoices were received so far. We've expended the full amount of the eight hundred thousand dollars in the CDBG grant, so the balance, I think, is, is coming from...
Sure.
...what's our fund? So it looks like it's, it's moving along well. We have bi-weekly meetings with the contractors with Whipper Sham, and, you know, I think we've been great to work with, and the project's moving along nicely.
Are there gonna be any type of enhancements as you drive down the street and drive into the entrance? Beautification, street, or just because, you know, you live where you live, and it's not, it's not scenic driving down, if I can say such, so that's why I say, will there be any type of enhancements?
Well, I know that there will be some landscaping along the driveway going into the parking lot, but as for a streetscape on Stockton Street, you know...
Not, not totally Stockton Street, just maybe the entrance as you get closer to where you're going.
There is, there will be landscape, the parking lot will be landscaped.
There's a sidewalk, too.
And, yes.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna say, was there anything in town that you, and just maybe the people who live there, like we move and trice, because you see a lot of different things around there. And as I said before, a lot of times you go into the board of education from that area there as well.
Yeah. I mean, the, the site plan didn't include sidewalks and landscaping, but if, once it's constructed, if we see that we wanna make more improvements or more beautification, landscaping, flower embosses or something, we can sure, surely add that.
And signage?
Uh, there's, there will be a sign on the building.
I'm sorry?
There will be a sign on the building.
Neighborhood Community Center. Not out by the street, not out by High Street.
Oh, out front, we already, we have a website out front, and then there's one on the building itself, too.
You know, just, you know, like an entrance of some sort.
We did a preliminary entrance off of South Street. Where's that coming? Is that...
It's dormant right now, because there's fourteen parcels of land that are in that corridor we have to get through.
I think I can get someone to donate a few of them tonight.
Yeah. That's right.
All right, very good. Thanks, Dean. Anyone have...
Are there any comments on the...
I have the parking spots, coming back here for that.
I'd have to pull the site plan out. I know that it met our criteria, I believe, for, for community centers.
And we'll be able to share the parking lot with the, or the...
Board of Ed.
Board of Ed.
What am I, the Board of Ed and also the credit union?
I need back to you on that, though, with the number of parking spaces. I didn't put the site plan up.
All right, Gene, and...
The last one is the, the water tower, the Walnut Hill Water Tower, which I, I think I printed out my cheat sheet on it and forgot to bring it with me, but the, the water tower is a project that's been completed for a couple of years now. And the way the Community Development Block Grants standards are, they, you have to have a meeting when you apply for the grant, and you have to have a meeting while the project is underway to, to get public comment. And in going through my files for this, I didn't see that I had a second public hearing on it. So I thought, well, I haven't been monitored on this grant yet, but I wanna make sure I check off all the boxes, so.
I believe we can talk about this at...
Yeah. They said if you, it doesn't matter if the project's closed out, have your second public hearing, so, just to make sure I stay on, in good stead with the state, and I'm gonna make sure I have my second public hearing. This is a five hundred thousand gallon water tower.
I'm sorry?
Yes, five hundred thousand.
At, at Thawood Road and two thirteen. So the Walnut Hill Water Tower. It, we had a study done on this water tower, and there, there were some deficiencies. It needed to be painted, there, there was some other minor repairs that needed to be made to it. So we applied for and received over five hundred thousand dollars from CDBG to rehab the water tower. It, it was a nice job, they did a great job on it. We actually came in under budget on that by about a hundred thousand dollars. I can't even give you the exact numbers if you're gonna put this in the paper. But anyway, paid in under budget, and, which they were, the state liked, which state both us and the state money. Ordinarily, we have a twenty-five percent match for these grants. And, but, I don't know if anyone has any comments on the Walnut Hill Water Tower?
All right. Does the board have any questions, comments? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? It is seven twenty-five, and this public hearing is closed. Thank you.
I'd like to comment that the structures on top of that tower go on to Sprint, and they pay us twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars a year for use of that tower.
Very nice.
So it's not too, too chatty. Lease agreement we have with...
That's a great lease agreement. Well, Lou, you're on. Well, let's bring Ed Geeter down.
You want to go with Louis? You can, doesn't matter.
What's that?
You want to go with Louis? Go ahead.
All right, Lou, you're on.
Proclamation, Elton High Alumni Day, Mayor and Commissioners of Elton, the Elton High School alumni, which I am one. Whereas the Elton High School graduated as first class in nineteen fifty-nine, my sister within that class. Whereas the Elton High has grown from a small school of twenty-five classrooms to a more especially learning center that educates Elton's community, Elton community, young men and women today while learning, quite preparing them for a larger student. And whereas for over sixty years, thousands of young people have passed through the doors of, of the Elton High School and are passed to adulthood. And whereas the Elton High School alumni routinely reunite and connect with those who share a very special time in their life. Now therefore, on behalf of the Mayor and Commissioners and the citizens of Elton, we hereby extend our sincere welcome home by providing an annual day of reunion for all Elton High School alumni. And furthermore, under the authority vested in me as mayor of Elton, I hereby declare the first Friday of October of every year as Elton High School Alumni Day.
Fantastic. Do we have a motion to approve proclamation P twenty dash two thousand nineteen? So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, and I like it that two of those guys actually were involved in this presentation.
Don't say anything.
I know. Any discussion on this proclamation? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Want to compliment Michelle Henson for writing that proclamation?
Thank you. It was wonderful. We're gonna need a copy up to the high school.
New Gen, okay, save your own.
Next one we have is, if you recall that, at last week's workshop, we had Ed Donahue and Eric Cluckew from New Gen Solutions and Strategies, and they presented, they have presented us with a proposal that includes five tasks as far as looking at the water billing rate and the water production. The tasks that they propose to provide is updating operating capital costs of the water and sewer systems, update customer usage data, develop five-year financial plan, and updated rates, task boards, update model formatted outputs, and to report on all those tasks before the boards. They have presented a proposal for nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars to conduct all of those tasks and present those tasks to the, to the board. So presented to, to accept or not accept their proposal.
Do we have a motion to present the New Gen Strategies and Solutions proposal? We have a motion. Second. Any discussion on it? We had the workshop, and as much as I hate to go through these studies all the time, I think it's something that we need to do every five or six years, just to make sure we're, we're on task, and we also need to, I wanna make sure about the billing audit and so forth, so it was included into this. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Inside the room, I have is Resolution R fifteen two thousand nineteen. I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the Mayor and Commissioners of the town of Elton here and there to the board, authorizing a loan from the PNC Bank, here and there to the bank, relating to the acquisition of vehicles and related equipment. Whereas the board, according to the charter of the town of Elton, Article eight, C eight dash three B, is empowered to borrow money for purposes deemed perpugnified by the board. Whereas the board, on August seventh, two thousand nineteen, by Resolution R ten, two thousand nineteen, approved the borrowing of six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars from the Columbia Bank, currently the Fulton Bank, the repayment of which is based on the amortization period of sixty months at a fixed rate of two point nine nine percent. Whereas the town administrator and the finance director subsequently contacted the PNC Bank to determine the bank would loan the town a principal amount of six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which included the capital purchase of the trucker department public work that was included in this three-years, twenty-twenty budget. Whereas the bank agreed to a loan in the principal amount of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, amortized on a sixty-month period at a fixed rate of two point six four percent. Whereas the board has determined that a loan that is set forth here in relating to the acquisition of vehicles and related equipment is in the best interest of the town of Elton. Now therefore, the board hereby resolves the following. That the town of Elton shall finance the acquisition of vehicles and related equipment through a loan from the PNC Bank in principal amount of six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, amortized for a sixty-month period at a fixed rate, two point six four percent, with no penalty for prepayment and principal. And the board authorized the mayor to execute all appropriate necessary documents and instruments with regards to the course of loan and to further negotiate the terms of the loan, including the amortization period. the loan, including the amortization period, interest rate repayment, reduction of principal, with the PNC Bank as applicable favoring the interest, and favoring the interest of the Town of Elton. And whereas Resolution R ten two thousand and nineteen hereby is rescinded, and this resolution will be effective on the date executed by the board. Essentially, what we're doing is borrowing money to pay for capital equipment, because the capital equipment has a service life over a period of time, so you, so you spread, borrow the money, spread that debt over the service life of that equipment, rather than just one lump sum of money going out for the equipment. So we're recommending that the board, uh, adopt this resolution, authorize us to go forward with the loan of, for six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars from PNC Bank.
And Lou, just to be, just so the boards aware, we did approve this, uh, a couple months ago to move forward with, uh, the Columbia Bank or Fulton Bank, and there was a, a few little hiccups, uh, that we had, uh, working with. Nothing, nothing major, but it was, uh, they were asking for, uh, uh, a little bit more than we were used to, and, uh, the team went over to PNC and actually got a little bit better rate. So that's what that was. Uh, we have a approval for Resolution R fifteen dash two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Motion in a second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Follow-up to Jeanie's presentation about the Neighborhood Community Center as a new date. Quicker Jam, Keystone Steel Structures out of Hunterville, Pennsylvania, is the company that's actually installing the, uh, steel structure itself. It's produced by New Core out of Lancaster, but the steel structures, Keystone actually builds it. So far, they have, uh, put the roof on the lower section, which includes a vapor barrier, uh, R thirty-eight, uh, value insulation, and, uh, and these metal roof panels. And today, when we were over there, they had already put the vapor barrier across the top section and had started the insulation and roof panels on the upper portion. I would be surprised, uh, given that we have good weather tomorrow, that they, they may finish that upper section tomorrow, if not, maybe Friday unless the rain drove bad and it can't work. You know, you use a get up on steel when it's, when it's wet. The, uh, company called H and B Plumbing and Heating, if you've ever heard of that company, has installed all the drainage, uh, in that building, for all the restrooms, uh, activity rooms, custodial closet, kitchen, and all that, so all the drains are in there. They have to be put in and at a grade, a certain grade, in order for the slab to be poured, uh, poured, and that should come within a few weeks. Uh, Quicker Jam installed a volleyball, I call it net sockets, and the gym day in the first line of any sports activity is, uh, is the volleyball, uh, thing they put in the gym, they had to do that where they pour the slab. Actually set the poles in there for the volleyball net. Of course, so far, we won't play it, but volleyball, basketball, but, uh, it's, it's there and they had to put it in.
So those, uh, floor, so those floor sleeves for the volleyball net, is it the width or is it the length?
It's the, it's across the, uh?
It's half court.
Half, half court. And they ha, it has a cover over it, so when it's out.
Metal cover.
Yeah.
Those, those poles will?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, but those poles will be currently embedded in the concrete?
No, take them out, when men play volleyball, take them out, cover it back on, you're gone. That's it, just, because we want to mess up the basketball, and affect the, that building.
It's not like you're, uh, you're going to play basketball and run around the poles?
That's what we use, that's.
Basketball.
Have you seen me stand up?
Actually, a lot of gyms had the sleeves in there when they were built, but as time went on, they had them taken out because they became hazards with the metal covers over them.
Ours are, I get great at the, the floor thing, so they're theoretically, they're both pretty good.
Okay.
You know, if they're not, I'd eat those words for it, uh, right now. Meadows is already, uh, we've closed oxygen shortly, and in order for Meadows to dig up the water sewer and gas lines that, so we can locate both the, uh, where they are geographically and at depth, so the next step, uh, Meadows would be to connect to those systems. But right now, they had to do ident, identify the locations. Mary's met with Comcast, and they'll run a Comcast, we'll have Comcast service run from Stockton Street. The electrician will run conduit in, in order for us to have both Comcast phone and internet service. Quicker Jam's providing a one hundred and twenty-five kilowatt a generator for the building, and this generator will, will actually power the entire building, including HVAC systems and everything else. When the, as part of the eight hundred thousand dollars we got from DHCD, they require us to have this building available in an emergency. Obviously, if you're going to have, uh, people in there, you got to have both relational systems in place, including ventilation and air conditioning and heating, so the generator will be part of the project. Total price of the project today, including free change orders, is three million five hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Cost of the project to date, between payments and retainage, is one million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars, as Jean said. We've already expended this eight hundred thousand CDBG money. Quicker Jam is still targeting June twenty twenty for opening, so there's nothing, uh, nothing in front of that right now, this is going to only be a weather. Uh, we have a progress meeting today, and, um, we're going to do four of the slab within the next few weeks, hopefully. Uh, first four will be for the gym, that's most critical, uh, because of the, it has to be perfect, and then subsequent to that, the slab will be poured for the remaining portions of the building. They have a contractor out of, a figure out when we tend to do that. So that's, that's the update on it right now.
Thank you, Lou.
That's, uh, I think that's all we're having.
Ed Ginder, Vice President of Shop for a Cop, you want to come on down and tell us a little bit about the event? Tell us when the event is and what you're looking for and what we need to do.
On behalf of Shop for the Cop, I'd like to thank Mayor Council for the opportunity to come before you. Uh, Jimmy Russell wants to apologize because he had an emergency and he could not make it tonight. We are running our Shop the Cop, January fourteenth, start at seven o'clock in the morning. Last year, we had a hundred and four children who participated in the event. The procession of, uh, law enforcement, uh, vehicles, we had ninety-seven vehicles plus some emergency vehicles that, that filled in. What I'm here before you is to request a route that we'd like to use from the singly fire hall to Walmart on Route forty. I think you have a copy of that in front of you, uh, if you have any questions on that. We'd come out of singly fire hall, take a right, go up to, uh, two thirteen at the intersection, take a left, go all the way down to Main Street, take a left onto Main Street, go out to Delaware Avenue, take a right onto Delaware Avenue, out to Route forty, take a left and up to Walmart. And if possible, we'd like to use that same route coming back, duplicate the same way.
Ed, the, uh, question we kind of talked about here, uh, uh, last year, when I, when I came back here and asked you, uh, why couldn't we go down Howard Street and we wouldn't have to worry about going back the, the opposite way onto Main Street? What, what was the feeling with the, the merchants? I mean, was there, is, is this something that they were excited about, or?
Yes, we, we saw a lot of, a lot of, uh, positive response from the merchants that were standing out in front of stores, and people who were shoppers, came out to see what was going on, so it was good exposure.
Rob, do you remember that at all last year?
I do, yeah. There were a lot of people milling around, who's an I see that come down the street. We had discussed you guys possibly coming back down Howard Street. There are merchants both ways, I see. You know, it's more visible if they come down Main Street. How much of an inconvenience it is, would it take like ten minutes, you say, to come down?
Yeah, de, depending how long the procession takes, it, you're, you're talking ninety-seven vehicles of, of law enforcement vehicles that sit, uh, just alone, and that's not including maybe a fire engine and, and ambulance or anything like that, so.
What are your thoughts on coming down Howard Street on the way back?
It's up to the good grace of the council, whatever you want, we'll, we'll, we'll oblige to what you want. I, I, I like the route going out and I like it coming back, but if, if there's some, some concern about coming back blocking traffic on Main Street and using Howard Street, so be it.
Well, Mayor, we have, we have time, can I do a survey along Main Street?
Chief, how do you feel about it?
Don't matter. We, we're here for traffic control, uh, during the event, so if you want to allow it to come back, uh, opposite direction on Main Street, uh, we'll certainly assist in making that happen and?
Well, I would say, I, I would say this, that, uh, we will not be meeting again until after the event, he says December fourteenth. So I would say, um, if, if we wanted to give Rob a little time to, that's next year. How do you, you guys feel about it? Rob to look into it, or you want to just say? Okay, here's, here's what we're going to do, is we're going to give the authority to, Rob asked Ginder to make this decision. And, uh, Rob, you're in charge of the decision, but please let Ed Ginder, or let the staff know, uh, first and foremost, uh, after you speak to the merchants and, and make sure it's not a hindrance during that ten-minute time on December fourteenth. Are you good with that, Ed?
Whatever.
Okay.
Also, uh, I talked to Chief, and, uh, they're going to participate as far as traffic control, I, oh, already, we already have the fire police lined up to assist with law enforcement, uh, and, uh, we have a special guest that's also going to appear that day, the Philly Fanatic will be appearing. So we're going to try to make it a good, uh, good Christmas for the, for the children, so. Any questions?
Now, Ed, when, when the parade of vehicles, uh, leave and come back, of course, the children are in the cars also.
Yes, along with the chaperones.
Okay.
And invitations opened all, any of you that want to participate, I would encourage you to be there in the morning for opening ceremonies, and also, if you want to serve the chaperone, or one of the, one of the law enforcement vehicles, you're more than welcome to. It's, it's a good, good experience.
So what time does this begin?
At seven o'clock, the law enforcement will start arriving, we, we meet with them, and then at eight o'clock is when we start to sign the children to the, to the officers.
And it is December fourteenth?
December fourteenth, I'm sorry, I, I said January, it's December fourteenth.
Thanks.
Any questions?
I can't.
No, no, thank you.
I think the board should make a formal motion to accept this, if, if, trying to heat close Main Street. If you're not going to go to Main Street, it's just a public street, using normal routes of traffic, but if you're going to change that, actually should, uh, make a decision about whether you're going to do that or not.
Putting a lot of pressure on us, you're taking away Rob's ability to make a decision.
We do it as contention.
Why are you stepping on me, Louis?
Yeah, I'm just saying that, uh, it's a, I think Ed would make the walk away, you know, and say, yeah, this is what we're doing, because we, we nailed it down.
Okay, can we have a, uh, well, we'll do this, can we have a motion to, uh, reverse the traffic on Main Street for the parade, contingent upon? Rob asked me in his decision. How's that sound?
I'll take care of it in the next two days.
All right, do we have, we have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Then what, our intent of this is that if Rob gives a green light, we've already voted in favor of changing him. All right, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Lot of pressure on you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, for all you do. Okay. Uh, the first thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, coming into the, uh, December schedule, uh, the town board will not meet on the fourth, we will not meet on the eleventh. We're only going to have one meeting in December, which will be on December the eighteenth, Wednesday. Uh, that'll, um, make our charter requirements, so we only got one meeting in December, and that will be on December eighteenth. Uh, December fourth, I'm looking forward, I think the board is looking forward to going to this Ball of Business Person of the Year, uh, that's on a Wednesday night, uh, so it'd be, uh, exciting, I'm not feeling to that.
And that's at, uh?
Sinking Springs. Sinking Springs. Uh, this Friday, of course, we have the lighting of the tree. Dan, thanks for hitting that up, looking forward to that. Coach Feeney, uh, and I asked him before the meeting, and, uh, we asked him to be our special light switcher on the, that evening, and, uh, you got to remember, they got a little bit of a ritual that they do, coaching, uh, uh, and it cuts a little bit into that time, and, and, uh, he was honored that we asked, uh, but he couldn't, he couldn't do it on Friday, of course. I welcome everyone to go to the Elton Football Game on Friday, the game's at seven, like to fill the, uh, fill the bleachers if we could, that'd be great. Next up, I wanted to thank, uh, Sue Whitaker from Sue's Quilt Studio for making us all a nice, beautiful Christmas bulb up here today, if anyone saw that. Very nice, maybe we can put one on the, uh, the new tree out here, you take that one, put it on the tree.
There's an extra one.
Is there an extra one? Very good. And, uh, I think everyone saw the last thing I had, I think everyone saw on the paper, that Immaculate Conception School, uh, it's a very good chance that, uh, this could be their last school year. Uh, there's, uh, uh, some concerned parents and, uh, uh, that are, are trying them out, uh, some effort to do what they can to keep the school open, and, uh, it's going to be a struggle. Enrollment's down, uh, you've got, uh, competitive, uh, Catholic churches in the area, and, uh, it's, uh, going to be a real struggle, uh, to be able to keep, uh, the school open, but, uh, I know that, uh, there's a, many people trying, so, uh, we'll know a little bit more by the December eighteenth meeting of whether that's going to happen or not.
Yes, I? To that end, I was in the ACME this morning, and they are working with the Immaculate Conception, asking people to donate and to register when they check out.
Oh, very nice. Very nice. Okay, Rob, you're on?
Emma said it.
Earl, I just have one thing to remind everyone of December the thirteenth, uh, the Dance Recital at Elton High School at six o'clock for the Parks and Rec. It shouldn't be a real long one, because, uh, he said it should be a short recital, but if you can come out, it's giving a lot of, a half you attend.
December thirteenth, six o'clock, Elton High School.
Earl, uh, how's the arm feeling?
Oh, great.
All right, I wanted everyone to know that Earl got in a fight.
He won.
Charles?
The Lord sent us a letter, well, personally, it's unfortunate for many, it's going to be closed, or has closed. And Lord sent us a letter stating that there's going to be an auction.
Yes. It was in a week today.
Yeah, well, that auction, auction be contingent upon getting a certain amount of money in order to sell the pay plays, or it's going to be an auction, period.
It's a public auction, and it's already, you know, going forward.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Jean?
Um, the only question, um, decorating contest, have we gotten anybody signed up? I don't know that anyone's signed up yet, so we have it out on, uh, Facebook and our website, and it's, um, Parks and Recreation created it as an event, so that, um, people can sign up online as well.
And, and maybe we could get Katie to do an interview with you and talk a little bit about the decorating.
Chaney would do a great job.
Oh, perfect, Chaney would be a great one.
We have to pick a time to all go out. And the deadline's the thirteenth, so that gives the board that weekend to, um, go visit their, um, the registered properties.
I'll drive the truck around for us.
Thanks for the warning.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I just was curious to see how many people had signed up, because if we don't have many people sign up, I, we talked last year about just going through the town, not having to register, so. I think, um, you can make that decision between now and then, right? Where we're at, that's all we have.
Pretty good, that's a good idea. This is the, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Said he had something for you, I don't know what he meant. Yeah. This is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone to say anything for the good of the community. Mr. Clay Hare?
I just want to ask a question, uh, because I'm interested in how you're doing this P and C thing in, uh, are you doing a line of credit there, don't you do the line of credit?
No, it's a loan.
So you take the whole money at one time?
Yeah, we're re, we're reimbursing ourselves for what we already spent.
Oh, I see, okay. The, uh, I find that P and C is starting to be looking more cooperative than it is the new Fulton Bank.
So is that a question or?
Sorry, an act. I'm sorry, an answer.
Anyone else? Uh, Ms. Sarah?
Just wanted to give you an update with the Hollingworth Landing Association.
Yep.
Um, we've got some big things going on in the neighborhood.
Fantastic.
We do officially now have a pantry in our neighborhood, as well as a little free library, and we have a second little free library in the works. Um, we are planning a holiday party for the neighborhood with Santa and crafts and everything on the fourteenth of December. Um, so, I said, there's a lot going on on the fourteenth, but if you're not busy from one to four, come out to the Family Education Center in, um, the Hollingworth Manor neighborhood, and, um, we're gonna have some Christmas, sorry, holiday, um, party going on. No, it's a holiday party because it's a school, so we have to honor the, yes, we have to honor the requirements of the, the property that we're using. Um, but we will have a Santa Claus and, um, available for pictures, and, um, like you said, we do have a, a neighborhood pantry now, and we have adopted ten families for Thanksgiving, and we're taking, um, applications for Christmas dinner as well. But, just an update of, you know, what's going on in our little corner of Elton.
Thank you so much.
Can I comment?
Yes.
I appreciate what you're doing for the community, and we ought to be proud of you.
We are very proud.
I said, all thirty years, you've sort of been all you could be.
It is not me. We, we have, we officially have an association, Hollingworth Landing Association. We have bylaws and, um, chairs and a board. Um, we're working on getting a nonprofit status. Um, we're establishing not only a group of concerned residents, but an actual association that's doing things to improve the neighborhood. Um, the, um, Maryland Rural Development kinda reached out to us to kinda get it started. Um, Cecil County Mediation still attends our meetings. Um, we have a police officer that's on our board, um, Officer Devine, um, is quite funny and entertaining, so please do not replace him thoroughly, um, that is on our board to help us find ways to improve the neighborhood. And this is an initiative that Maryland Rural Development wanted to start, and we are kind of their guinea pig neighborhood. Um, basically, if they can make, go within our neighborhood, they're gonna branch out into other neighborhoods in the county, um, targeting other depressed neighborhoods like Lakeside and, um, maybe even, um, oh, the name of it escapes me, but off of Fletchwood Road.
No, Wynden Brook.
I'm sorry.
Wynden.
Wynden Brook, thank you. Um, because all of those neighborhoods are, are faced with some of the same challenges that our neighborhood is. Um, we were the, the guinea pig neighborhood because we had Maryland Rural Development in our neighborhood, um, and we had some pretty vocal members of the neighborhood that were already trying to do good things. So, um, with a little bit of luck, we are going to be the pilot program, and it's going to grow from there to make Cecil County not just Elton a better place to live in general.
Excellent.
I, you know, Sheila really did, Sheila deserves a lot of credit. Sheila is, um, she doesn't work full-time, so she's the one that opens the pantry. Um, she's donated half of the, um, the other side of her duplex is the pantry now, so, um, she gave up a tenant so that she could have a pantry. Um, so, she really deserves more credit than I do. I'm just, I'm the vocal one. Yes, sir.
You are gonna have, uh, food at your party. Do you have a kitchen and everything with you? You're cooking?
So, the, um, school does have a kitchen. Uh, what we've done for some of our events is, um, when we're doing, so we had a Halloween event, and we did, um, hot dogs and donuts and stuff, and we grilled outside. So, when we can avoid being in their building, we try to, because it takes away from their school atmosphere, even on a weekend. Um, but they welcome us into the neighbor, into the building a lot. They have, um, they have GED classes that are offered at the school, the, um, Family Education Centers. They have both day and evening classes. Um, they had a huge increase in attendance to the GED program. They went from almost needing to cancel their daytime program to exceeding their, um, avail, availability for students. So, um, their program is growing, uh, with the exposure of the neighborhood. Um, so, little by little, the manner is no longer good to be said with those nasty little connotations to it, because we're up and coming. We're, we're going to be a premier neighborhood before we're done, so...
That'd be nice. I'm rooting for you.
Very good.
Thank you, Sarah.
And you will have some of our houses in that contest for the decoration.
Perfect.
Just discussing today.
Thank you. Anyone, yes, Mr. Ed Ginder?
I, I failed to mention, uh, we are meeting tomorrow night, the board of directors, to review well over two hundred applications from children who are referred from the social department, social services department, other, uh, social service departments, the elementary school guidance counters, they're, they all refer these children to us. We review them, we narrow it down. Uh, sometimes we have repeat children coming back year after year, so we try to get as many new children as we possibly can. Each of the chaperones or law enforcement officers are given a list of the size of clothing that the children would wear, uh, the type, kinda toys that they would want, and, uh, they're allowed to spend up to three hundred dollars each for each child.
Very good. All right, it is, uh, almost eight o'clock. This meeting's adjourned.